I'd like to open up our front row of House special meeting tonight, this Tuesday, September the 8th, 2020. We have two items tonight we need to cover. So we have a roll call.
Mayor Sealaw?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sealaw?
Here.
Councilman Cockrell?
Here.
Councilman Gillespie?
Here.
Councilman Holloway?
Here.
Councilman Mezzet is absent and Councilman Thompson.
Present.
First item tonight is the public hearing, amendment to the Front Row 2021 budget to receive funds related to the CARES Act equitable distribution. Would you read the summary, please?
Sure. Town council is requested to approve an FYI 21 budget amendment in the amount of $1,201,558 to receive funds from the county of Warren related to the second round of CARES Act equitable distribution.
This time we'll open our public hearing. Anybody here to speak on the public hearing tonight? Anybody here to speak? Third time, anybody here to speak? Public hearing's closed. Don't hear motion.
Mr. Ray, I move the council approve an FYI budget amendment in the amount of $1,201,558 to receive funds from the county of Warren related to the second round of CARES Act equitable distribution.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing now. We'll have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sealaw?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Mezzet is absent and Councilman Thompson.
Yes.
The third item tonight is council approve the FYI 21 budget amendment, transfer of Main Street Pavilion and restroom. Do you read the summary?
The Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development has provided the town with approval to amend the community development block grant budget for transferring $100,000 from the community development block grant facade improvement project to the Main Street Pavilion and restroom construction project. Town council is requested to approve a transfer in the amount of $100,000 from the community development block grant facade improvement funds to the Main Street Pavilion restroom project funds and a budget amendment to carry funds forward from FY20 to FY21 totaling $225,715. Town council is also requested to approve a bid from Lance Construction of Winchester, Virginia in the amount of $295,800 for the construction of a pavilion and restroom in the downtown gazebo area.
Thank you. Don't hear motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approve a transfer in the amount of $100,000 from the community development block grant facade improvement funds to the Main Street Pavilion restroom project funds and approve a budget amendment to carry funds forward from FY20 to FY21 totaling $225,715. I further move the council approve a bid from Lance Construction of Winchester, Virginia in the amount of $295,800 for the construction of the pavilion and the restrooms in the downtown gazebo area.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sealaw?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Mezzet is absent and Councilman Thompson.
Yes.
That concludes our special meeting this evening. This time we'll go into our actual work session for September the 8th, 2020. First item tonight is budget calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It seems like just yesterday we were actually approving the budget and now we're getting ready to start our next fiscal year. Mr. Wilson, is anything you wanted to highlight on our schedule?
None. The schedule's pretty much the same as we've used for the past couple of years. It allow two work sessions before we advertise for the taxes, then it allow almost three months there before the second and final reading of the preparation of the budget. The only thing that I'd like to point out is that one thing we've done in the past is we have a work session for budget goals with the town council. I wasn't sure if that's something we wanted to address this year or if we want to delay that until election. Council members can afford it, but I think that is council.
But we don't need to...
There's no action. That's what you're giving us.
We live on the agenda for council to approve.
Oh, you want that?
We don't necessarily need it. It's just been a formality within the past.
Anybody want to discuss any more on that?
Just like to say, I think we ought to have the discussion of the budget goals. I can't bring that off the side yet. Still, we've got some good issues here in the town that we have to address still, and I would just like to add.
Matt, do you... Is anybody else by the way want to move that? Go inside here.
I do.
Okay. Matt, can you work up time and meet all the councils and consents?
Sure.
And put this on the next Monday night's agenda, on the consent.
Do you want to formally approve it?
Yeah. We have in the past, but I don't think it's necessary. It's just something.
Have it through.
Just put on the consent.
You put the second item tonight is discussion of the drug epidemic in the town.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the request of Mr. Gillespie at the last meeting, he wanted to have this item put on our work session and I thought we'd have Chief McGales talk about an overview, nothing very specific, but an overview of what town PD is involved with and what their responsibility is. I mean, as we all know, town citizens are county residents, so much of this, if not a great deal of it, falls on the county. But Chief, where are you? Do you want to go ahead and... You want to go up to the podium there, Chief?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Pastor Counselor Gillespie. I just put together a couple of things to kind of discuss with you unless you know where we're at.
Take your mask off. You're 64.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. As you all know, we are dealing with the drug epidemic right now. The biggest problem that we're facing right now is the opioid crisis, and that's what we're trying to combat right now. As you know, most of you understand the concepts of the regional drug task force. We're members of that. We can't really rely on that to solve all of our opioid problem. They're pretty critical in managing most of the drug issues that we have, and I would say a fair portion of the opioid crisis is unable to be managed by them. When a larger scale drug dealer comes to town, the task force cannot kind of operate on that. They're designed to target mid-level and higher level drug dealers and not drug users, and drug users are where the overdoses are actually happening. And it's sort of a different approach now. These folks, instead of having a drug dealer in town, they usually have a group of friends that are also using, and they'll take turns riding up to Baltimore or DC, one of the more sore cities, purchasing relatively small quantities of heroin and coming back, using it up, and then they'll oftentimes make more than one trip a day. Sometimes, you know, they'll just kind of spread the wealth and drive it up and take care of it. The numbers of overdoses have risen significantly this year. Since January 1st of this year, we've had 47 opioid overdoses in town with 10 deaths, and we've had 13 opioid overdoses in county with three deaths. Last year, let's see, last year.
Okay. Well, if you're repeating that, yeah, it was 47 this year.
Forty-seven in town.
And 10 deaths.
And 10 deaths, yes, ma'am, and 13 opioid overdoses in the county with three deaths. We're outpacing last year already. I'll get into that momentarily. We've got, just for example, in 2019, we responded and administered 49 doses of Narcan to bring people out of crisis, and that was for the entire county year of 2019. Thus far, in 2020, we've already administered 50 doses and we just started in September, so.
How far along would the need to have that dispensed with the narcot before they can bring it out?
Well, sometimes it takes more than one dose. Yeah, occasionally you'll have somebody that's either ingested enough or has that much less of a tolerance that it would require more than one dose to actually bring them out.
So you have to catch it at a very special time in order to be able to...
Well, yeah, you don't want to catch them. You want to try to catch them as early as you can after they overdose, for sure. And that's not the only challenge we face. I mean, legislation's been a little bit tough on us. I mean, I understand that some of it is designed to save lives and assist in some of the things we're dealing with nowadays, but if anybody understands dealing with the, some of the amendments to some of the drug possession laws, when you show up on an overdose now and a person has overdosed and called 911, or if someone else there has called 911, they can't be charged with any crime. So even if they've got illegal narcotics on the person, there's nothing we can do about it. We seize it as contraband and can then destroy it, but the person just, there's no recourse for their actions. Of course, we try to investigate every situation that we go to, but about half the people that we deal with like that just turn and walk back in the house without providing us with anything. Needless to say, some of these Narcan administrations have been provided to the same people, so. And that part is unfortunate. Again, you hate to think, again, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that incarceration is the answer for addiction. It's certainly not, but every once in a while, you can get somebody that will take advantage of a program that they're bored with to do or, you know, end up in jail with time on their hands and will, you know, accept counseling or therapy to try to overcome their addiction. But those laws have pretty much made that part of it impossible. On a more positive note, the Warren Coalition, our local partners in prevention, have just secured a $1 million grant for harm reduction, and so far that's just kind of not as an extreme harm reduction program as we've seen in some places with needle exchange and things along those lines, but it's more based on prevention. We had our first Zoom meeting last week. Krista Shifflin is our Warren Coalition director, and she's identified a lot of key areas that she's going to try to work on with this funding, and many of the spots, essentially positions that will be filled to carry out this grant are DSS, Social Services, Northwestern, and of course Coalition members themselves in partnership with law enforcement. So that is a bright spot. Hopefully, we will be able to recognize at least some relief to this drug epidemic because of that.
I think something that's stuck out in my mind unless I just understood is, so it's 47 in town, 13 in the county?
Yes.
So we're more than three times, the town has more than three times the amount of overdoses than people in the county? Is that...
Reported overdoses, yes.
Reported, okay.
This is all...
Yep. No, I was just, I'm just thinking, so then within the town limits, and I mean, statistically, we look like we've got a bigger problem within the town limits. Not, I'm just saying, more people.
No, and there can be some things that...
Sure. I'm sure they contribute to that.
Yeah, locations, we've had some issues at certain locations, and folks, when they realize that they're in a remote location in the county and they know that law enforcement or fire rescue isn't going to be there in a few minutes, typically tend to have...
They may be locations.
Be prepared.
Well, how many of those 47 happen in low-income hotels?
There's been quite a few.
So locations are...
We had a discussion with Hotel Only last week about management problems.
I was fascinated with the piece about when you talked about incarceration. It's not the answer, and I agree with that, but it seems like to me that you hear about the police force is not doing enough, but what's the after action? They're not going to court. They're not, they're just released. It seems like to me that there ought to be somewhere that you can take that individual and say, here's your options. Is there anything on that?
We don't have those options anymore.
It's not just in our community. It's just in Virginia now, right?
It's nationwide. This problem is not, we're not special. This is occurring all over the country right now. Fentanyl is, it's not even so much heroin they use, it's fentanyl.
Well, my second question would be, I'm sorry, the follow-up. How many of those 47 are recurring again and again?
Been a couple. There've been a couple. So, and again, of course, everybody always says you can't arrest your way out of the problem, and that's true, but there's, there are things that hold certain people accountable if they had something to lose. Now nobody's had anything to lose, and I mean, you can't police addiction, but, and that's part of the issue, is we don't have the resources here available for treatment like some places do. Larger localities have got treatment facilities, things like that, that could potentially help folks overcome this, but they've got one to do.
It would follow up to that. Mr. Downs has been before us twice about drug addiction, and we have no facilities. But if you can't force them to go to one of these facilities, what is the answer? It's all voluntary.
Absolutely. That's absolutely true. I mean, one of the things that's been tried and had some effect in other jurisdictions is the drug case. If somebody overdoses or, you know, we come across somebody that's in possession of narcotics like that, they go to court, and perhaps instead of incarceration, they can choose to go to drug court, which is basically requires them to attend treatment. And the numbers, you know, if you save one, I guess it's worth it, right? But I mean, the numbers are roughly 27%, so it's still a difficult, it's difficult to have a rosy outlook, but again, you know, that's the thing. We have to try to. Yes, ma'am.
Hearing ahead and...
See, I just had a couple of points here. First of all, I want to thank you guys for the work you guys do. Along that point, I know the purpose of government, you know, is usually written on the street. One of these treatment facilities, what would be the best course of action to be able to get one here in our area, whether it be Winchester or here in Front Royal, or, you know, it's not something that the government is going to open. It'll take a private business or contractor to be able to do this. Is there any names of people that we could possibly reach out to and possibly talk them into company? Because I know the hospital would be a perfect place, but it's going to be empty here, so.
It certainly, it would certainly be a matter of funding and being able to acquire the facilities, get the call by personnel in place to be able to manage that type of a facility. And obviously, the place to start would be Northwestern, because they've, you know, they've got the, again, not going to mention words, most drug addiction is linked to mental illness in some form or fashion or not. Where's the focus of...
I think it's Richmond there.
Well, it depends. There's a few smaller private places that are closer. There's a small facility in Winchester. There's, I believe, there's one in Stan. I know there's one in Drummond Oak, but they're few and far between.
But when you say private, right, that means the family, the addict or the family is footing that if it's private, right?
Many of them are, yes.
Yeah. I'm just saying, so that kind of boils down to money again, right, if they don't have the money.
Right. A lot of the drug court stuff is, you know, it's outpatient, so that's a, you know, when a person is addicted to an opiate, it's a little bit different than, if a person's addicted to cocaine, they'll just run around the streets and chase cocaine off, and if they can't find any, they'll go home and go to bed. Someone who's addicted to opiates, they know if they can't find it, they're going to get sick. So that's what drives it. It's a, it's a much deeper addiction than we see with some other drugs.
The court, can the judge mandate, could he mandate that they go to one of these facilities instead of jail time?
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
I mean, because to me, instead of plea dealing out to where they're only going to get three or four months, if lucky, they're going to be back out on the street doing the same darn thing again.
Right.
And that's, that's a problem, and I know you guys beat your head against the wall for that problem. Order them to go. If they don't go, or they don't, then put them in the jail cell.
That's, and I think that's one of the intermediate goals that this grant is, has kind of in its, within its scope, is to, is to try to put some legs under potentially a drug court program. So, I mean, it's a start. It's a start.
For Northwestern, there's a place to start with this.
Right. I mean, they would be...
They would be assessed what kind of, it's going to be at least our local wish right now, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we do not have a drug court program like Winchester does, though?
Correct.
Okay. So the Warren Coalition, it seems, is doing some work and has a grant to be able to do more robust things. Like, I know in Winchester, there's one facility where people can go, part of the drug court, they go, they get like cab vouchers, they can try to get jobs, they have to, you know, do all of these things, and we have absolutely nothing here. So is that part of their focus too, is to get some more things like that?
Right. Well, and that's part of the issue. It's the closest facility we have for even that kind of low-level outpatient is Winchester. Most of these folks aren't mobile, so I'd be gun there. That's...
Well, and that's what I'm saying. We need something here. And they have peer recovery specialists who have also been down that path, have recovered, and therefore they're better mentors to those people because they've been there. You and I talking to them is like, you haven't been there, what do you know? Okay. I think that's important. So I guess I'll get with Warren Coalition to ask them some more questions.
Yeah. Northwestern is collaborating quite a bit on this grant, so again, they're trying to get their legs under, under this thing a little bit so that we can have some support. We're having had a couple of comments. Thank you to you for that background. From my perspective, I think it's important to make it clear as far as what law enforcement's job is in this, in this problem that we have nationally. Law enforcement's job is primarily to arrest bad people who are breaking the law. Their job is not to address the mental illness of the patient or address the dependency upon the drug itself. So from a town perspective, we're limited from the Department of Social Services angle. We're limited as far as the health care. You know, that's just not, it's not within our structure to provide those services. If I could suggest, Mr. Mayor, members of council, what may be beneficial is, is, you know, setting up, getting with the county supervisors and setting up a true committee and find, partnering with, getting with Warren Coalition and other stakeholders as well as some of the nonprofit churches. I think this is a, this is a community problem, and I think it's going to take a community to help drop these cases down. I mean, these are the cases that we know of, right?
Right.
And you can magnify that times a factor probably as far as the people that are actually addicted, but I think it's going to take, counties are going to have to take a significant lead on this because the resources are at the county level to, to bring some of the tools and some of the stakeholders to the table, so to speak. And second, I just wanted to reinforce what the chief said as far as the laws. The laws and riskmen are not helping, are not helping at the local level. You know, it used to be that if an individual overdosed, you know, you could arrest the person and try to get the person some help through the judicial process, if nothing else, but right now, they're just turning around, going back inside their house.
I wanted to add to that, that I think it's like a good Samaritan law or something. That was because if you and let's say three of your friends or whatever are hanging out and you OD, you can't call the police yourself, and your friends are like, well, we don't want to go to jail. So then they leave you to die versus calling the 911 to get you the help. So that's why they put those in place, and I understand that that's, you know, people being able to get the help. And it's more, in my opinion, a health issue almost than a criminal issue when we're talking about the users.
Yeah, no, that's a great point. And the health issue, it is a health, if you're going to attack it as a health issue, I think you're going to have to solve it as a health issue and not necessarily try to solve it from a law enforcement.
Right, exactly.
That's the point I was making.
Why wouldn't Valley Health be involved in that same committee?
I think, I think they'd be a critical piece of it.
As well as the schools. I'm just saying, because education is the key part.
Things that we can do locally, you know, we can, we have mailing list of every single electric customer, you know, we can put things in our, in our utility bill, we can, whatever it is, but I think it's going to take a combination of a real strategic plan from multiple facets to try to, to try to really impact some change.
I'm sorry, I have one last question, I think.
Yes, sir.
So do you have an idea off the top of your head about how many juveniles that OD'd in that number for like maybe this year that had increased over prior years?
Well, yeah, there's more, there's certainly more than there were last year, but it's not, it's, it's not an exorbitant number yet, and we certainly hope that it doesn't get that way.
But we are seeing...
Unfortunately, we're starting to see more juveniles with the opiates. We used to, kids used to chase them with marijuana, but now it's, you're starting to see some of this fentanyl, and it's just heart wrenching.
Yeah.
Is this worth putting on the liaison committee meeting? I mean, I think definitely this needs to be on there, and we can talk to them about it, you know, that way at first.
Sure. If that's a quarter away, why wouldn't we ask the mayor to approach the chairman of the board supervisor?
Give that some...
And I'd be more, more expeditious than...
I think...
Maybe I'll be the goalie.
I want to get the ball rolling.
I would go with the mayor first and approach the chairman of the board and establish a committee.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be more glad to do that. As a matter of fact, I was thinking that, you know, maybe Thursday, you, Matt, and myself, you know, may sit down and put some names together, and then after I talk to Walt, and then, you know, give maybe a small list, and then they get their list, and then we sort of combine them together so you see where we can go from there.
Because it's definitely... If you had my name on a list, if you're making a list of people, I'd like to be part of that.
Well, would you see, if we're just going to talk about businesses right now, like, you know, hospitals, whatever, whatever, and then later, as we get into it, maybe we can, you know, have individuals and people like that involved.
And I think there's also, like, there was a group that was meeting here for a while called Lean on Me, Families of Addiction. You guys are familiar with that, and they were meeting like once a month, and they were inviting, you know, people to come in, and then I think as, you know, as they had less and less people there.
True.
But that would be definitely, you know, there are people in our community, and I think it's in Richmond, Kew, I'm not very sure, but I think there was like, like a treatment facility, but it was completely funded by churches, and that's the, that was the only one that I know people were talking about, that you could possibly get your family member in, that it didn't cost you anything, but they had to go, you know, away and live there, so anyway.
And on their own.
And where they're at.
Yeah.
Sometimes being away is one of the best things that...
Yeah, actually, being away from the peers that you were spending time with is helpful, which is...
Okay. I'll get in touch with county board tomorrow with Walt and people in our town, and Thursday we'll discuss a little bit.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Our next item tonight is closed meeting. Your motion?
Well, I don't, it is, where is it?
Mr. Mayor, I move the town council go into closed meeting for the following purposes: DCS cares, act funds, and Drug Enforcement Agency grant funds. Number one, decision in consideration of assignment, promotion, performance, and salaries of specific public officers, appointees, and employees of the town pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711 point 8 point 1 of the Code of Virginia. Number two is consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711 point 8 point 8 of the Code of Virginia.
Your second?
Second.
We'll discuss you before we go into closing.
Vice Mayor Seelak?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meadows absent, Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Your turn. Well, thank everybody for coming. This time we'll be going into closed meeting.